Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 16th, meeting of the North Andover Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM and ask you to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here for a public comment? Come on up. Give us your name and your address. I know. I don't know why I asked the question.
Hi, my name is Jim LaFond and I live at 329 Osgood Street. And thank you very much for your time. I understand you'd like public comment till last three minutes, so I think I can stick to that. That's why I'm reading. I do have a couple of disagreements with some of the proposed policy for the Board of Selectmen, starting with Article One, Section C, which is "Public Comment at Select Board Meetings." I've talked to several of you before over the years about this, but in particular, the quote in the policy, "Public comment is not intended to be a discussion, debate, or dialogue between or among citizens and the select board." And respectfully, I ask why not? Isn't the select board supposed to be the voice of the people? Isn't reasonable debate and dialogue to be encouraged and fostered? In what other form are we able to ask questions, offer our opinions, voice our concerns, and of course, listen to yours? Town meeting? Yes. But I think it's a worthy topic to have much of that dialogue, debate, and discussion well before town meeting. Onto Section E, Board and Committee Appointments. In general, I've never had any issues with the way the Select Board makes appointments. However, in the recent past, I've been shocked at a few non-reappointments, namely to the Historic Commission, the Old Center Historic District Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Like most of you us in this room, I have sat on various boards, and I have also sat before various boards. Neither is easy. Often, there is an uncomfortable feeling facing our friends, acquaintances, and neighbors while voicing an opinion that is differing or conflicting with theirs. But in my opinion, this is how a healthy community works. Your current and proposed policy mentions diversity. I too believe this is good. However, I also believe the tremendous value in longevity on a board. Longtime board members and committee members bring stability and institutional knowledge to their respective committees. To me, mentoring of longtime mentors was invaluable and still is today. And when we make decisions that are unpopular or seemingly overreaching, we need support from the Select Board, not discarding. It is not only the diversity of a board or committee's membership that is important, but the diversity of its opinions. The Select Board needs to trust these opinions made by volunteers working in the best interest of our town. I believe these policy points, as written, can be discouraging and disenfranchising. Please encourage and foster involvement, and I believe that starts with weekly meetings and public input, and your board and committee appointments. I request you respectfully reconsider these two policy points. My third and final point is not about policy. It's about Lake Kachikowic. And possibly you've revisited or visited this before, but I was out of town. And frankly, I believe the town is not managing the water level in the lake very well. I believe the extraordinarily high water level is partially responsible for downstream flooding in the past several months, and I believe the water level will lead to the destruction of much vegetation, particularly mature trees along the shoreline, which will also lead to excessive shoreline erosion, increased turbidity, degradation of wildlife habitat, and an increased cost of water treatment. Our approach seems to be reactive rather than proactive, including the placement recently of a sign at the edge of Stevens Pond, Swan Nesting Area. This is after two swans built a nest just off of Pleasant Street, and when the water in Stevens Pond was suddenly decreased significantly, they abandoned the nest, which a lot of waterfowl will do. Let's think before acting. I don't know whether the town has a water level policy, but I think we need to develop one. We don't need more water at this time. A town commissioned report for the Trinity Development Merrimack College project states this. So again, why upset the apple cart? If we need outside consultation, I think we should hire it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Melissa, do you think it would be appropriate if you explained why we can't?
I think you can address it.
Yeah, I think we should put it on, if we're gonna have a conversation about it, I think we should put it on the agenda, because it's not on the agenda. So for us to have that conversation could violate the open meeting law.
So even just stating what the outside rules have told us?
Are you talking about the discussion about debate? Right? So the reason, the reason we don't respond to public comment is typically, like the one you just made, it's not on the agenda. So for us to respond could be a violation of the open meeting law. And so a lot of the time, when something comes up in public comment that the board then wants to discuss, they'll put it on their next agenda. But that's why we usually don't get into a dialogue.
It's very hard not to respond for somebody like me, because I like to, I like to be able to address it and talk to people. It's, it's hard. But we've been told that we're not supposed to do it.
What will happen basically in instances-
So stop.
Yeah. I mean, this is on the agenda, so, right. This is on our agenda, so it's a wonderful conversation for us to have during that item.
We're still, okay. So moving on, is there any further public comments? Okay. Not hearing any more public comments. I'm gonna move along to new business.
Isn't it on the agenda when we discuss the policies?
Right. So when we get to that, we certainly can discuss that.
Yeah, when we get there. We can have a discussion about it when we get there.
Okay.
Okay. Our Item A is our Town Manager's Evaluation. And so, over the last few weeks, we have had the opportunity to evaluate Melissa, which I think has been a great process for all of us. And I want to take a few minutes to express our sincere gratitude for everything you do day in and day out to keep things rolling around here. You know, you and your whole team. I know it is a team effort, and you're always the first to point that out, which is one of the signs of a great leader. So I would like to open it up for my colleagues if they would like to make a comment.
In my short time, I've really, really enjoyed working with you. You've really helped get me up to speed, you know, very quickly. So, and you do make it look easy. So I really, really do appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
And nothing, every issue we've had to deal with, whether it's the floods or anything else, it's really, that's when it really shows. And we really appreciate it.
I like the fact that you're just very open to new ideas or comment or explain why. And you do a really good job explaining. And you're always accessible, even, which is hard. I mean, you have a family. It's, it's hard. But you're always accessible. And whatever we or myself bring before you, you, you address it like right away, or get it on the agenda, or have someone talk to me or explain why from a different department or whatever. But it's, you're doing a great job, and you work really hard. You, you work all the time.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate it. But then there's times where I'll say, please take a day off. Enough already, you know? But thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
So I'm just reviewing my, and I just think, you know, again, you surround yourself with a great team. And that's, that's a real asset for a leader, to be able to pick those people that are gonna elevate her even, elevate the leader even further. And it's an important trait to be able to have. And I think you continue to do that, which, and you empower them, and I know I say this every year, you empower them to do their, their job. And that's important, because it gives them that freedom to be able to do the job and be able to either, you know, fail or get it right. And that's important for them to grow as employees, too. So I think that's great. I think you continue to position the town for financial success. I think you're very creative in the way you find solutions to some very difficult problems at times. So I really, you know, appreciate that. And, you know, you've kept us at our AAA bond rating, I believe, right? So we're there. And then, you're a great team player. And, you know, I think I also commented on you at meetings, you know, you, you help when you need to be, but other than that, you, you know, you let the meeting play out the way it should. And, you know, you've, you get us out of a lot of binds sometimes. So I think I really appreciate that. And I think I echo Smackman's Medili's, Smackman's Medili's comments about, the only thing I would say is, you know, again, you know, you need to free yourself up, because you do a lot. And so just, you know, you do a great job of delegating, but maybe you need to do more, that you can free yourself up for more, because you've got so much on your plate. So.
Thank you.
I obviously agree with everything that everybody has said, and I really appreciate what you do for this town, and how much, you know, you treat it like your hometown. And what it, you know, you put the residents first, and what's best for North Andover first. You sort of stepped in as Columbia Gas was finishing, and then we hit you with COVID and floods and microbursts. And it just kind of keeps coming, but you handle everything with such grace and fighting for what's important for our businesses and our residents. And they, the communication that comes out of town halls, I know that everyone appreciates. And, you know, it's hard going through those. I hate to, I think Rosemary has said it, we've kind of got good at reacting to disasters, unfortunately, but-
We've got plans for everything.
We have plans for everything now. But, you know, you're just follow-through with all of that is really appreciated throughout the community. And I think the thing that I appreciate the most is that you take, you make a plan, right? Like Facilities Master Plan Two, we've got a plan, you follow the plan, and, you know, let's plan for the future, whether it's the water levels, or the lake, or the schools, or the fire station, or staffing of our DPW. Like, if we have a plan, then we can fulfill that. So we appreciate all that hard work that you put into that.
Thank you. Thank you. I would agree with what all of my colleagues said. And, you know, it's the fact that you don't just make the plan, we follow the plan and make it happen. But again, primarily, I know you don't actually live in this community, but you're a true member of this community and always put our residents and businesses and, you know, all the different stakeholders as your priority. And it shows, really, truly. So you make time for everybody. And I echo the sentiments that we just want to keep it sustainable for you, because it's a big job. So we appreciate you very much and are grateful that you're, you're here. So.
Thank you, Ollie. Appreciate it. I know every year I say the same thing, which is that I'm only as good as the 160-plus people who work with me every day, and they are all amazing. So they make my job that much easier. And I do appreciate that, and our volunteers as well. I think we've got kind of an amazing team right now. And so I'm looking forward to seeing what we can accomplish over the next year.
Awesome. Thank you. So now we can move on to old business. Item A is to review and approve policies. So you can talk about this, but we've already gone through each and every one and given our input. And now it's all compiled, so.
Absolutely. So for those of you at home that haven't been following along over the summer, we had a series of meetings where we went over our current policies. Some of them were looked at by other committees. So like, for instance, the lake policy was looked at by the Harbor Master and a group of other employees who were working with him on making sure that there wasn't anything we needed to update there. You know, Town Council looked at a lot of them. HR looked at some of them, and we made sure that we really had the best possible policies in place. And then we added some new policies into it as well. And so since our last meeting over the summer, we incorporated what I believe is everyone's comments and suggestions. And we also reorganized them, just so that they're in a, you know, you don't want someone to look at the policies and say, why is the use of the town common before the election of your officers, right? It just doesn't make sense. So we reorganized them in a way that I think makes it easy for people. And then our plan is to embed them in the same Code 360 that we use for our bylaws, so that if someone is looking, the most common policy that people are looking for is the use of the town common. So if someone is trying to figure out, how do I use the town common? They can easily go to our website and find it without having to call and ask. Although they'd like to call and ask, we're always happy to point them to it as well. And so these are all of the policies that we went over, over the past three months, updated and pretty much ready to go. The only difference, and I know the Harbor Master is here today, and he may perhaps want to help us with this as well, but we, I believe he had a meeting, and I don't want to speak for him, but I believe he had a meeting with Brooks School about the boats. So maybe it would be helpful if we could hear from him about that?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, Peter, thank you. And I believe it was him, Jean, Jim Stanford, and Chief Ware, right? Four of you?
I think Chief Ware had gone duck hunting in Saskatchewan.
Yeah.
And he otherwise would have been there, but John Borgizi was there as well.
Great, thank you.
Peter Boynton, 320 Stevens, volunteer Harbor Master and Planning Board.
No, drafted Hall of Fame.
Actually, thank you, Rosemary. That is absolutely true. And just for the record, there was mention at the time of possibly a hat.
Yeah, I couldn't find one.
Seven and three eights.
Harbor Master, and he said, done.
We'll get your hat.
We'll get your hat.
So the meeting at Brooks, Director of Facilities, Finance Director, and their rowing coach were there, and gave us a tour of the new boathouse, which is really terrific. It's further away from the lakeshore. So a lot of good things to see there. Regarding the electric boats, I came with some basic information that one of the leading producers of electric motors is Elko. They produce electric motors for 40, 50-foot vessels, as well as some rescue craft, and some planing boats. And they have exactly the same horsepower, 9.9 horsepower, that Brooks uses. Their Facilities Director and Rowing Coach have done quite a bit more research than I had done. And quite frankly, it was good to see that. They said, if my memory serves, that they're in touch with some of the manufacturers every three to four months, getting updates. And that is very encouraging to hear. We quickly arrived at what I think was agreement that to transition to electric motors on the lake for their purpose, which is both coaching and emergency response, in case there's a capsize of the shells with the kids, especially given the time of year in the spring, cold water, hypothermia. I told them that from my perspective, I've not heard anybody in town debate the safety issue, but that there is, from my perspective, growing concern about how long the grandfathering has gone on. I referenced the town-sponsored working group, which I believe was in the late 90s, where Brooks had representation, their rowing coach at the time. And one of the conclusions of that was that Brooks would transfer to electric motors when technology enabled. So that's kind of our reference point here. And I think Brooks understands that. But I think we had, and I think we had agreement that it's really a two-act play here. Transitioning from gas to electric will almost certainly also requiring, require transferring to a different style boat. Right now, they're using the fairly heavy aluminum rowboats. They're quite large. It, it does take a lot of power to push those at speed, because they push a lot of water. And for Brooks, the issue is twofold. Adequate speed, and importantly, adequate endurance over the time necessary for either a coaching session or a regatta and a race. And in order for the electric motors to perform with both speed and endurance, they're probably gonna have to transition to not a pontoon boat, but a catamaran-style coaching boat. These boats are already made. They have smaller ones that are 15 to 16 feet long. Then they have very large catamaran boats that are 25 feet long, which are not appropriate for our lake and not necessary. But here's the challenge. Even those small catamaran-style boats are more difficult to haul in and out of the water every day, which they're currently doing with the rowboats. They're not using trailers, which are not allowed under our town regulations. They're using pull carts, and you can in fact do that. But even with the 15 to 16 footers, they're a little more unwieldy. And once you add the batteries for an electric motor, the weight becomes problematic. Now, keep in mind that even with the aluminum boats, you've got a five-gallon container of gas, about six pounds per gallon, so about 30 pounds, plus the aluminum boat. So there's a lot of weight there, too. So, you know, it's heavier, but not in order of magnitude heavier. But what they felt was all of the other rowing programs that they have researched that are transitioning to electric motors, and I should say that are piloting electric motors, they're all keeping these boats in the water, really for the whole season. And for them to do that on their waterfront, they don't have enough waterfront, and I think that would be bad for us. We don't want to be keeping boats in the lake. We want them hauled. They also made the case that their practice is to use eight chase boats. I knew they had eight chase boats, but I really wanted to hear why they were using eight for even practices, not just regattas. They made a good case, from my perspective, for the safety ratio. By the way, there's another great advantage to them to transition to these catamaran-type coaching rescue boats. They have almost no wake, and they're very quiet. So instead of megaphones trying to be heard, and they can't hear anything from the shell, they can actually speak. It's much more effective coaching, and there's no wake, which is very disruptive to the rowing shells. So there's a great advantage. So we came up with sort of two, I thought, maybe somewhat new ideas as a result of that meeting. So thank you for putting that on. It was very important, I think, that we did that. One, there are new style of floating docks that allow you to pull boats onto the docks. Now, the most common example are jet skis. I quickly made the point, we are not looking for jet skis on the lake. But those style docks could be used to pull these catamarans right up onto the dock. And you could get eight of those smaller-sized catamarans, side by side, pulled up on the dock, and you could do that every day. I think that is our path forward. So when will we get to the point where there is a right-size electric motor to fit those catamarans? They wouldn't commit to a date, and I think it's because they don't know. And I think it's a fair point. But they agreed to provide a report to the town on what their plan is to transition to electric motors, which of necessity will almost certainly include also the catamaran launches. They have to be the small type. And by the way, they typically carry two people, but they're engineered to carry eight for a rescue. So they really fit the purpose. And a new style floating dock that allows them to pull up. It's not much different from what they have now, but there's some important differences. They have to regularly replace that dock anyway. So the idea would be to time it when they're going to replace the dock. I asked them when they would expect to have us the report. At the time, which I think we met with them a couple of weeks ago, the coach said he thought they could perhaps have it to, to us by the end of this month. I think maybe that's a little aggressive, but if we don't see it by the end of November, I think we should reach out and ask. Because it wasn't just the coach. Their executive staff committed to give us a report of their plan. They cautioned that it's probably not gonna have a date certain of the transition. And I said, fine, give us some general milestones of what you're gonna accomplish. I told them I thought it was very important to have word from Brooks on what are they doing. And I thought that would be good for Brooks as well as for us. That's kind of the report. Sorry, it was so long.
So, thank you, first of all. That was a really good readout. And, and I personally have thought for years now that they could transition. But I think you pointed out a lot of good reasons why it could be possible and why there's some constraints there. But what about like a compromise? Could they have the chase boats be electric and then still have the rescue boats be gas, since the rescue boats may not be put in the water as often? And, but keep those kind of in, in reserve for-
I think it's exactly the kind of discussion we ought to have going forward, to find, are there other options we haven't yet thought of, combinations? For that particular option, I would suggest probably not, because if a boat capsizes when the water is cold, you literally have minutes to get those kids out of the water. And the time it would take to launch a boat, it's just not workable. But I think those-
But the other boat would be in the water, too, though. I'm sorry.
True, true. Actually, I, I did forget one piece. We also talked about them doing what other rowing programs are doing, and the coach named them, and that is to pilot an electric coach boat, one of the small catamarans. And they did not commit to do that during the meeting, but we should expect to see comments about that in their report. And if that is not in their report, we should ask them to comment, we should ask them to add what their intention is for piloting one. I think that would be incredibly important to the town in terms of a signal that they really are intending to do it. And I think they are. I also think it would be very, very important to Brooks, because once you start piloting, you're gonna learn things about how good they are. You can do a better job coaching. You don't have to worry about these huge wakes, which also are not good for the lake because of erosion. And it, they're not small. I mean, these are, these are very big wakes, and there's eight boats out there. So there's a lot of them, and it's repeated daily for much of the season. So I think that piloting will help advance that discussion and, and really could provide opportunities to go and, hey, tell us how the pilot's going. And then we could have more of these discussions. And even the result of getting this report is another opportunity for more discussions. You know, we might think about, once we have the report and digest it, possibly a follow-up session to talk about it. And then we have opportunity for more ideas to come out.
Can I ask one more question after? Sorry.
No, go ahead.
When, when they host events, are the host boat, are the boats that are coming in from other communities, are they, do they go through any kind of inspection or anything before they get put in the water?
Great question. They absolutely should. And I think that was part of our discussion. And my recollection was, they said, yes, they're inspected before they go in. But it, it's an essential point. I, I almost feel like if it didn't come up, it's, it maybe is not important, because I, I would be hard-pressed to believe that their coach is not aware of that. But it's absolutely a great point, and it's essential that it be done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. You, you do a great job. You always do a great job. Just to make a point for the people at home who don't know Mr. Boynton's background, he had a long and very successful career with the Coast Guard. So that he clearly knows of what he speaks, and we're so grateful to have you in so many different ways. But thank you for coming in and explaining to the laypeople why all this is so important.
So, thank you for those comments. I would also add that perhaps my most important boating experience was paddling on the lake with my dad. I was born here. I grew up here. I still have his 1948 canvas-colored, covered Old Town canoe that he used to paddle around in the lake. And that's where I got my first boating skills. So I am a native Lake Kachikowian.
And the gentleman behind you has, is also one, and has been known many, many years ago to camp out on one of the little islands as a kid.
We're both classed in 1975.
And, and neighbors.
Yes?
Yeah, they grew up on pretty much the same street.
I do have a couple other comments about the lake, and I don't know if there's an opportunity for me to make those.
Can I just ask a question about Brooks?
Please.
So I think at one point, we were talking about the different types of rescue boats, and some of them are easier for them to pull out of the water. Is the catamaran the easiest for them to? Because it's hard for them to get them up over the aluminum boat, right?
So, oh, you mean to pull the kids out of the water?
Yes.
Yes. The catamarans are lower to the water than the-
So it's easier for them.
High-sided aluminum boats, which have a much higher freeboard. Yes.
So that's an even more reason to-
Yet another reason. The catamaran coaching boats are just, on any measure, far superior to those aluminum boats.
Okay. So it's really multiple reasons to start moving in this direction.
Yes. The only challenge is how do we avoid having to have eight of those catamarans sitting in the water for the entire season, which I think is, I think we don't want to go there. Made a lot of progress with the public boat racks. But there's, the solution is the dock that you can pull them up. And for the 15 to 16 footers, that would work.
And the docks will be in the water?
The docks are already in the water for the whole season.
Yeah.
They do get pulled out at the end of the year, and that practice must continue. And there's no indication that it won't.
It won't, right.
I had a question about the battery-operated engines. Are the batteries separate from the engine, or they're housed in there?
Yes. They're, they're not what maybe we're used to, where you've got a car battery on a strap that just slept down to your boat. They're fully enclosed batteries, very high degree of safety. They're not the ones that, you know, were restricted from airlines because they were bursting into flames.
And I'm more thinking, there's no chance one's slipping- And, and I'm more thinking, there's no chance one slipping out of the boat and falling to the bottom of the lake, and then what happens?
So, if that happened, um, we really would need to recover it.
Yeah.
Um, I think more preventative than really an acute issue.
Okay.
Um, but I, I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't say that it would be much worse than having one of those tanks of gas go into the lake. And today, we have eight five-gallon containers of gas being filled, hand-carried down to the waterline, lifted into boats, driven around the lake. The boat comes back, the partially-emptyed gas tanks are lifted out, hand-carried along the shoreline up to the hill. Now, they're storing them in a correct facility, well away from the shore, but that is a lot of hand-carrying activity times eight.
Yeah, there's no way, there's not some spillage at some point during the year, right?
And so, you know, that's a hazard. So, one of the things I stress with them was, let's not just look at, "Oh, what are the hazards with electric engines?" Let's look at it compared to the hazards of having your student managers handling gas tanks every day. And they acknowledge that.
Fair.
This could be an improvement in both, uh, personal safety of the participants and environmental safety for the lake.
And where will they charge the batteries?
So...
At the boathouse?
Um, when the planning board met with Brooks about building their new boathouse, the subject of, uh, transitioning to electric motors came up. Somebody raised it on the planning board, and, um...
Somebody.
The, the sort of jurisdictional connection to the boathouse was whether or not they planned on making provisions for recharging electric motors in the boathouse. Now, they don't actually have the chargers, but they told us at the meeting that the conduits to provide for that were included as part of the new boathouse.
Perfect. That's great.
This is huge progress.
Right. This is a policy that's important to everyone. We've had a ton of discussion about it, and I'm very appreciative that you guys sort of took it to the next level. I mean, we can't maybe get where we want to be immediately, but I am very satisfied with forward progress and everybody being on the same page and...
So, just a couple of points, uh, I got to make. First, um, um, Melissa, the town manager, set up the meeting, and that was huge. And, um, other town officials went. And that's really important, because if the volunteer harbor master shows up, unless I got the hat, I really don't have any authority.
We're going to get that hat.
The other credit I want to give was, we, we are really relying on that town-sponsored lake working group in the late nineties. And there's someone here we can thank who was a member of that group with really far-reaching thoughts and embedded this in writing, and that is Peter.
I, I was going to get to my Peter line, his background was conservation.
Or Jim.
I was like, I was like...
Peter? Jim?
Jim. Oh, I did it, too, but I know better. Um, but, but Jim also has a, a very distinguished background in conservation. He was a conservation agent, and he is truly an environmentalist in every sense of the word. Um, the, the Boy Scouts of my kids in particular had a lot of great environmental tips and stories from, from him as well.
So, thank you.
Yeah, so two great, two great North Andoverites that are giving back to the town.
Last seventy-five. Um, I know I've gone on way too long, but I was hoping I could make a couple of other comments on the lake.
Um, is it relevant to the policies?
Um, I think they're relevant to the policy.
So, relevant to the policies, because we are, you know, that's what we're talking about, for sure.
Thank you for making the change to the policy, because we never expect intended to restrict the boating season, it was just the storage season, so thank you very much. I totally agree with the high-water concern. I think it's a serious concern. John Simons and I spoke with the town manager and DPW director when we were contemplating buying four hundred Gray Pond Road. I think there was agreement to monitor the high-water level, and if it remained high, to commission a technically competent study. Um, I had another conversation with the town manager, and my understanding is there's a search for a technically competent vendor. I strongly encourage you to pursue that, and I'm available for help with, of course, the DPW director and the other, um, departments. I think it's very, very important.
Thank you.
And there are signs around the lake shore, Jim is correct, that trees have been inundated for almost the entire year, in some sections of shoreline, twenty to forty feet of shoreline underwater for almost the entire year. And what impact will that have on the water column and the future drinking water supply? We don't know without a study, and I agree with Jim, we should not wait to be reactive.
We will certainly need your assistance on that, so thank you.
I'm sorry?
We will definitely need your assistance when we do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, so for the rest of the policies, everything is as we discussed, or the changes that we made within the meetings. Um, I don't know if anybody has any individual sections that they would like to talk about. Some of the major kind of highlights, um, of changes is that we are electing a vice chair, so that's something that's new, um, but that I think will be helpful. Um, we're not making many changes to our remote participation policy. We're making changes to our public comment policy in light of the Supreme Court case that came down. Um, and so that will make sure that we're giving our public comment in adherence with not only the open meeting law, but also with, um, case law.
But it doesn't mean that we can't put it on a next agenda and discuss it.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
So, I just want to...
But we also talked about that, in order to not make our citizens who come to speak, which is so uncomfortable for so many, that we would just explain that we are not allowed to comment at this time.
We have talked about that, too. You would even have something...
We're going to leave a copy on the podium.
We're going to put something on the podium that says we can't just have a public comment.
People come, and then they think, "Well, they didn't even acknowledge it."
Just explaining the rules, it is.
It is, it is. But it's, but it's...
And it's hard for them. People just, many people just shake when they have to come speak before us.
Buy, buy the...
No, but I think if we at least explain the rules ahead of time, they won't walk away being, "They didn't say anything."
I know. We did talk about that.
Because your common layperson doesn't know what...
No.
I, I completely agree.
I, because I had said that at the last meeting, "We can't keep doing this, it's rude."
Um, I think some communities have gone to doing no public comment, because this has come up. I don't know that that's the direction we want to go. And so I think if we print out our policy and just leave it kind of over near the turkey, um, which I thought was a Thanksgiving decoration when I interviewed here, I didn't... Oh, no. Now I know. It's been there for years. And then, um, again, on the kind of tape to the podium, I think that will just kind of give people the idea, because having this policy is really important for, for a few different reasons, but one of the reasons is that there has been these first amendment auditors who have not just come in and started taping at town meetings, but have also come to the podium during public comment. And when the chair has tried to say, "No, you're out of order, you've talked too long," they've said, "Well, what's your policy? You don't have a policy. Well, I can talk as long as I want, and I can talk about anything, and I can say whatever I want." So having this policy and kind of posting it in different places will allow us to say, "These are our rules."
But the only thing, Melissa, I would think that, again, knowing how people sometimes react when they have to come speak before us, they're not going to sit there and read it. I almost think we should just do a quick, abbreviated summary as possible, and then the people at home could see that we're not being rude, we're following the law.
And it really is just that these cases have come down over recent time that we just need to make sure we're in alignment with.
Is it acceptable when the, when you open public comment, just say, "As a reminder," you know, these are our, like, three bullet points?
Three minutes, total fifteen minutes, we cannot have dialogue.
And this is by law.
Two things that I think are, are distinct items. When we talk about the cases and people filibustering meetings, and we also want to protect against all that, but it is the inability to have a back and forth and have a conversation with someone that I think is what, what you're...
It's so operating.
It's so frustrating, which is the open, which is separate from the Supreme Court case, this is the open meeting law, because it wasn't noticed that it was on, it could be on our agenda.
And we had done it for years. They'd come, they'd speak, I mean, Dickie can attest to that, we would speak back, and then we found out we can't do that anymore. I just think a few quick sentences, and people at home will, because they have to be watching at home and think, "They don't even acknowledge what that man or woman said."
We could put it in, on the, in the agenda.
On the...
On, like, we used to deal with their remote participations, you know, we used to say, "We could just put that as a little, like, disclaimer on the agenda."
And it would be read at the beginning of the meeting.
Needs to be read.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
I think that's...
Okay, I can put something together.
I appreciate that.
That's just quick and...
Yeah, just, yeah, no real details, just...
Yeah. And it's just a, a reminder, you know, we are, we're going to ask people to conduct themselves in a peaceable and orderly manner. Unfortunately, we can no longer mandate comments that are always peaceable and orderly.
I mean, stop them.
We, right, we, but we don't have to tolerate any threats of violence or anything that might incite violence. And so we do still have that as a tool, um, and I know that I've seen that be frustrating in a lot of other communities. We've been lucky that we haven't had that situation come up. Um, but if that does happen, you know, we'll kind of work together on, on dealing with that.
If, if I could just jump in quickly on, uh, the appointments, one of, I think, one of the things that was noted was, you know, regarding diversity of appointments and all that, I think one of the, the items of diversity is longevity. I think that's something that will continue to be a goal of, of the board as we go forward, uh, when we're making some of those appointments. And I think similar to our public comment discussion, I, I think there's, we've certainly heard comment in previous meetings, uh, trying to understand why, what was, when, when some of those decisions, reminding people that the process is public, but at the end of the day, it's not here to, to discuss in that sense. You know, we have discussed, it's personnel matter, which again is frustrating for us not to be able to say in a big, open meeting, "Here's why we made one choice or not another." Uh, it's really between, you know, the board and the committee and that particular pointee, uh, or, or candidate. So just, it's, it's in a similar vein to the public comment, where people ask the questions and we have to, we can't really respond to it in that sense.
Right. A lot of the policies are frustrating in many ways, because while they are dictating how we'll operate, they're also to protect the town as well, um, from litigation and from complaints. Um, and so I can see how that could be very frustrating to someone in the public who's trying to find answers.
Okay. On that note, we have gone through these with a fine-tooth comb. Are there any other comments or discussion?
I mean, I don't remember all the changes, but it seems as though the changes are all listed.
We consolidated the north pump station language, I think, within the general...
Much as we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, as much, I had DPW look at it, and we moved to what we could, but they did still want a separate section, so I left it as much as, some of it. Um, we included the new policy for conduct. Um, what I would like to do is, once this passes, is share that with all of our members, and then when new members are appointed, basically they would sign off that they received it, just like they sign off that they receive the open meeting law and the ethics, um, because that's going to be important, um, for us as well.
It adds one more layer where they have to sign that they received a code of conduct.
And we'll ask the moderator to use it for finance committee as well.
Yes, great.
And our swag reasoning?
No. Is in compliance with, um...
State.
State, the federal law. Yep. It, it still leaves it, it, almost nothing really changes, except that instead of having a petition come forward, now it has to be a town sanctioned event. So, if you wanted to raise a flag for, I'm trying to think of something that is non-controversial, if you wanted to raise a flag for non-controversy day, um, it would just have to be non-controversy day brought forward by the select board.
Be kind to them.
Yes, be kind to them. I'm fine with that, yes. Um, that would have to come forward by the select board.
I would support that.
Yep.
Um, so just so I'm clear then, would the flag we just voted to raise on Friday not be allowed under the new policies?
It would not. It would have to come forward under you. And that is basically what, it would be allowed, it's just the process would be different.
Oh, got it, okay, okay.
The process would be different.
It's not going to come from a resident petition any longer.
Got it, understood, okay.
And that is what the, um, case law stated.
We wouldn't have to make a day to do, okay, got it.
But a resident could approach us and say that...
Could ask you to put it on the agenda, yes.
As wanted.
Got it.
The end goal and the end result is the same.
Is the same process.
It's just that we're using a, um, very legal method to get there now, instead of having a method that maybe perhaps is not exactly right, so...
Understood.
Yeah, and then a lot of the policies were pretty new, like, we just did the naming town buildings and assets policy, we just did the procurement policy, so those have all just been, uh, replaced in. And the only thing you're not seeing here is the personnel handbook. Um, Dee and Carrie have been working on that. It, it's actually, there is more edits than is in this document, it's kind of amazing. Um, so you'll be getting that separately, I'm assuming, probably soon.
Yes.
So the old one just stands for now.
And nothing on dictating when trick-or-treat's going to be, right?
On dictating, it is always going to be on Halloween for the rest of time.
Very strong opinions, all right.
People have a lot of opinions about Halloween. Better not rain. There are a lot of phone calls that rain.
It will probably rain.
Any other discussion before we move on with approval? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
Chairman, move approval on the select board policies.
I'll second. I have a motion, and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Didn't it feel good to accomplish that?
Yes. It's been a long time.
It feels good, all right.
Lot of work into that. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, item B, the fiscal year twenty-five goals, I will pass it back over to town manager.
So this was your document that was on the agenda last time. The one thing that we need to do is just, um, put a select board lead on the ones that we don't have a lead yet. Um, so the maintain fiscal discipline in AAA bond rating, I don't know if anybody wants to be the lead on that.
I, I wouldn't mind working on it. I mean, I don't...
I mean, you're the lead.
You're the lead. You said something that isn't yours.
Everyone stepped back.
No, but I'm always, my time on the finance committee teaches me about AAA bond ratings, and says that we certainly want to keep.
Um, work with developers to mitigate burdens of large development in accordance with the master plan. Um, you know, the only ones that I really see right now is perhaps the redevelopment of the Osgood parcel, which is out the bit right now. Um, I don't think there's really much, unfortunately, in the horizon for big development for us, um, because we're, they'd be technically already a planning board, yeah. But if there's, is there anybody who, over the next year, wants to work on this one?
I'm happy to.
Okay. All right, Janice, we already had you on continue investment in sidewalk maintenance. Okay, that was one that you must have put in. Um, facilities master plan two, I wouldn't mind taking two people on this one, just because there's going to be a, a lot this year with Kitchener Hage Middle School and Fire Station.
I would love to join.
Great. And then review and make progress towards forty-B, continued collaboration with Affordable Housing Trust. So Janice, you have your name on that one, but I was thinking about also adding Dick, because he's on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Sure, yeah.
Perfect.
Which one is, I'm trying to follow along here and I'm not seeing.
First page from tw- from.
Number seven.
Yeah. Not under new goals.
Yeah, it's at the top.
Where's the number? You have to count.
You see it?
Third one from the.
Oh, you don't have numbers. I have numbers online.
Yeah, because I'm like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the actual spreadsheet because I'm making changes.
That's okay. That is fine. I can count.
Route 114 improvements in economic development. I do assume that we will see this project kickoff this year. So is there anybody who'd be interested in serving on that?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, expand the use and availability of renewable, on renewable energy for municipal departments. I think Dick, this might have been yours.
Yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to be on that one, yes.
Dick also had update all policies and procedures based on recommendations from the securities audit.
We did it. Didn't we do it?
Yeah, we did. We can delete that one. Implementation of the Plan for 100 Grape Pond Road. Dick, I also want you on that one.
I just gave an update to the M. Dick.
He's like, my name's coming up awful lot. Continue to invest in road paving and implementation of five-year plan.
I would do that.
Okay. Establish, Rosemary would like to do the tree.
I would too, but that's fine.
I could put you both, yeah. I mean, there's going to be a lot of work on those right now. We're actually, we're planting 100.
I was the one who kept saying.
I know.
We're planting a lot.
Rosemary, have you seen the tree in Pre-Christ Park that's dead? Like it's not, there's one.
I'll go look at it tomorrow.
Yeah.
What, it's sick?
It's, there's no foliage.
It might be an ash tree. We're having a lot of problems with the ash trees.
But sometimes it could have just been the season this year, so you might, we'll ask the tree experts. I am not one, but you, sometimes you can have like blight because of a lot of flooding or whatever, the weather conditions, and it does come back.
We're having a lot, but we're planting 100 trees right now. We just got 100 trees in.
Awesome.
From, for the Columbia Gas Park, the trees we had to take down.
Oh, down the.
It's hard to source that.
Swimming in trees. How good is that?
They're nice big trees, nice big healthy trees. Yeah, we're very.
So like contract two trees.
I did get a call from someone in one of the neighborhoods that said, where are our trees?
Yeah, they're coming, because of the drought, we couldn't get any trees last year. They were so skinny.
But are you going to be able to get them in the ground this fall?
This is the time of year we plant. So, yep.
Okay.
Yep, they're in, we're planting.
That's very exciting.
It is exciting. Continue to investigate areas.
I did lose a street tree. I'm going to have to call you.
Oh, call. We're going to have extras.
That was the first tree that always changed colors.
Wasn't it gorgeous?
It was beautiful.
Yeah, we're going to have extras. Continue to investigate areas for open space.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay on that one.
I'm going to stay on that one. Janice, this was one of yours. Explore options for continued support for food security.
You can put it either.
Yeah, complete watershed study to address impact of higher lake levels, storm capacity, and issue of private dams. We just talked about that.
Well, we can.
You want to do it together?
That'd be great, actually.
We're going to have two separate things going on, so I think that will work all fine. Redevelop town websites to be more user friendly. I actually already asked Brian to help with that because it was something he had brought up of interest to me, so we can put Brian.
It does, it's quirky sometimes where it's like, why isn't this working?
We had our first meeting, that's what, so.
Yeah, there's some places where, you know, you can find information under one place where you'd expect it to be under another.
Exactly.
And it seems like there's duplication.
It's just such a huge volume-loving station, I think.
So much stuff, so I think.
But it's come a long, long way. It really has in the last 12 years. It's come a long way.
And it's really pretty with Tim Campbell's pictures in it.
But it just, between the laser fish and the Google documents and like knowing where to go to find things can be hard. And with the ADA accessibility work we just did, we know we'll make sure that it's completely ADA accessible too. So it's, it's a good time to do it. Townwide traffic study to develop mitigation strategies to address traffic in congested areas.
That was mine. I put it on there, so.
I did, I think I was part of mine too, but go ahead.
Okay, no, it's, it's, I was going to say, I have to take it if no one else jumps since I put it on there, so.
I would join you on that. That's fine.
So we should meet, so we can go over what we already have. We'll get Gene. Implementation of Fields Master Plan. Laura, Janice. Continued review of DPW staffing needs. So this is, continue the process from last year where we got three additional employees. They're supposed to be bringing forward a five-year plan. I think that was yours, Rosemary, right?
It was because I've been seeing the results of it for you.
I did, yeah.
Working with the one there.
I think we all, we all.
Well, I can't have three, I can only have two.
No, that's fine. That's fine. Go ahead.
Continue to work with property owners around the downtown shared use path along potential areas of the Merrimack River to develop new go-to areas for economic development. This was Rosemary's.
This is the one that we had the meeting about that.
The rail trail.
That would, right, in that it possibly getting it to tie into the river with mixed use, you know, housing shops maybe on the first level, but you've got to get a lot of owners to buy into it. But if, if we could pull it off, it will take years.
It's going to be many, many years.
It would be.
Faster. We can do it faster.
But if we can, it will be a, a great hotspot that will bring people downtown. They'll just come through town. It's pretty exciting, but there's a lot of work ahead.
I'm, I'm happy to help you with that if you want. We spent some time on CPC. We started to look at some of that, you know, last year, so.
Good, perfect. Okay. And then Rosemary, you also had the G grade alarms sewer discharge one, right?
Well, because of this so much discharge, we also, several years ago, when it was a pilot program, was to bring in food waste that they would put through the.
They are doing that, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the digester there.
Right, so you wonder if, so I'm concerned that maybe it's too much for that, that facility. So I just wanted us to at least check it out because it's rather embarrassing every month or so.
Definitely.
And it's, it's just, there's kind of an ick factor to it. So, yeah, I would.
Working on that.
Yeah, I would be happy to do that, obviously.
Rosemary, you wanted the one to consider the design review board?
I think on, without stepping over into people's.
Yeah.
It's kind of difficult, but it, but if you can, if you can teach people how this, this, and this would be better for you, maybe we could work it that way. A silly, small example, I think you would tie into this, that small businesses, and I know everyone wants to be energy conscious, but our light bulbs are, are much better, is that if you want people interested in your business or seeing it when they drive by, we were told a lot of glass and lights even at night to let people kind of peek in and see. When it's all closed up and small, people will not enter the store because they're afraid once they're in, they can't get out unless they buy something. And that's not a joke. It's really true. But, so I think a few things like that could maybe make for better business where people just might not know that these are the tricks of the trade. You would be very good at that as well because that's what you, you do.
Yeah.
But it's, they, they close things in and it, and you go into a store and you're like, how do I get out of here without spending money? So they don't come in. So if it's a lot of glass, they can see in kind of, you know, and, and then in the evening, and they can have the lights shut off at a more appropriate time to see like it looks like it's alive and happening. It's little things like that that I, I thought we should talk about and investigate.
Okay, and then for the priority, I did, and let me know if anyone doesn't agree with these, continuing for the fiscal discipline, continuing for the continued revitalization of town, downtown, continuing for the work with developers. So this basically lets us know if it's something we should put to the top of the list. Some of them are just constant, never kind of go away. Continuing the investment in sidewalks, continuing. I kept the 40B at high. I kept one, Route 114 at high because I think that's going to be on our plate this year. The expand the use and availability on renewable energy, I put it medium. The implementation of Plan for 100 Grape Pond Road, I put it medium. I put the road paving at high because it was something that everyone had written down as a goal.
Every day, one of us gets a call, I'm sure.
Of course. The tree planting program I did continuing, and the open space I did continuing. And then for the food insecurity, I did medium. For the watershed study, I did high. For the town website, I did medium. For the mitigation strategies, I did medium. For implementation of Field Master Plan, I did continuing. For the DPW staffing needs, I did continuing. For the Merrimack River, I did medium. For the GLSD, I did medium. And for the design review, but I did low since it's something we're just studying. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
It's fine. We can push it at the high gear for, we've got some momentum.
Yeah, it just helps the staff know if, when they're making the priority list. This is something I should, I need to work on right away because it's going to be on this town meeting. This is something that I can continue to work on as we go through the year. So, okay. Great.
Very good. Thank you. Sounds like a good year. We've got to work hard. Which we.
So you do vote on these, okay? So you just vote to accept the fiscal year.
I think we need to.
Yeah, so you vote to accept the fiscal year 25 goals.
I will take a motion to accept fiscal year 25 goals.
I, yes, I can't even think of the word.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. We do not have any consent items tonight, so we will move along to board reorganization. Pretty straightforward. We can start.
Ma'am Chair, I'd like to nominate Laura Bates for Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Comments, concerns? Do we ask her, do we not ask her?
You do have to say yes, yes.
Don't ask her. We don't want her. Okay.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item B, a vote to elect Vice Chair. I would like to nominate Rosemary to be the Vice Chair. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
First ever Vice Chair.
There you go. I think that's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Moving on to voting to elect a clerk, I would like to nominate Selectman Valencourt.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote to elect a licensing chair.
I would nominate Brian Roach for the licensing chair.
I'll second that.
I have a motion.
Give him all the paperwork.
Rosemary's like, just get it off my plate.
Just don't drop your papers on the way into the door.
It's another one. We don't want to ask him the question.
Can I look at Melissa? All my papers are all mixed up and then the two of us were kind of pummeling through it.
It's all good. Usually I have it memorized by the time you come.
It all worked out.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
And item E, vote to elect the Appointment Subcommittee.
I'd like to nominate Janice and Ryan to that committee.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Just starting when?
Next meeting.
Right now, Laura. Slide over, Laura.
So I'm off the hook for next day.
Okay. Thank you all. That was very smooth and I appreciate it. Town manager updates, or do I give it to you right now?
Well, first, I would actually be remiss in not saying thank you, Janice, for everything that you've done, chairing us through.
It's been a pleasure. It has. It's been.
Out with a bang.
It was always something to keep you in trouble.
I have learned a lot this year, so I actually think all of you, yeah, it's actually been a pleasure.
If we had done this in June, we would have had to deal with the floods.
I feel like it was all meant to, meant to be, so I appreciate your confidence in me and it's been a great year, so.
We survived.
Yeah, we did. We got through. Thanks.
And staff.
Heading to town manager updates.
So just a reminder, tomorrow we do have our employee appreciation event, so all of the town buildings will be closed from 12 to 2. At that event, we are giving out pins to employees for five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service.
We have a 35.
Who's 35?
Mike Dunn is 37.
Who is that?
Mike Dunn, DPW, so.
That's awesome.
Rick Lomond, you're out as the longest employee, though I know you've been trying to tell everyone that, so. To help he's watching, but we couldn't believe it today. I fell out of my chair. Yep, 37 years as we were doing the pins. So Rosemary has told me she cannot come tomorrow, but she would be receiving her 20-year pin, so I wanted to bring it with me tonight so she could have it.
Congratulations.
22 years. But thank you so much. No, unfortunately, I was so looking forward to this, I need to be out of town for a memorial service, so I couldn't make it. And I, I came into the office and I said, wow, there's pins too.
So I have my 20-year pin.
20 years, yeah, it's a great event.
It's a long time of service.
We have a goal to shoot for.
Selectman Valencourt will be getting his, we don't have 11 years and seven months, but he'll be getting his 10-year pin.
Well, mine's short. Mine's a little shorter, so, yeah.
So, yeah, we're very excited to be able to do this tomorrow. It's going to be a great event, so.
And how's the weather?
Not going to rain. I just checked. So what we're wearing.
Is it outside?
It's in the tents at Stevens Estate. So we'll be wearing our, you know, I'm sure we'll have our fleeces on. But it's not going to rain, so I'm sure we'll all enjoy having a little fresh air.
I'm glad that we're able to.
Yeah. 109 employees have IRCP that they are coming.
That's great.
Yeah, which is amazing.
I'm really, I'm upset. I'm going to miss it.
It's going to be fun.
But please pass along my thanks to everyone for all the amazing stuff they do.
That's exactly what I said to Melissa earlier. I can't make it, please, when you were congratulating everybody and having fun, please say that I would absolutely love to be, be there.
It's going to be great.
Some things come first, even, even.
Understood.
Parties and stuff like that, or absolutely.
Have to take a backseat to this.
And place in fire, we'll be open.
I know, I was actually.
They will be visiting us. If you see a fire truck at Stevens Estate tomorrow, you need to be alarmed.
There's enough time to get the heck of a fire master.
Yeah, I could probably. But yeah, it's going to be great and we're very excited about it, so.
Thank you. They are, they are very deserving.
They are, yes.
Absolutely. All right, on that note, our next meeting will be Monday, November 6th.
Ma'am Chair, can I say one thing? I know we don't have any Selectment Updates on there, but can I just make one comment? Okay, so on Monday, October 23rd, is the 40th anniversary of the Beirut bombing, where we lost a member of our town. For me, he was a classmate, a friend, a scout mate, teammate. So we will be going to the field at 9:00 AM on Monday morning. We've been working with the Veteran Service Officer to lay a wreath and, you know, I'd like to, it would be great if we could get people out there. You know, we want folks there to remember, you know, Sean Gallagher and the sacrifice that he made on this day 40 years ago. It's amazing that it's been 40 years. So I remember getting the call from the Tribune on the day that it happened and it was really, really something, so.
I think I've told you that my son Ryan received the scholarship in his memory.
Yeah, from the Gallagher family. So the members of the Gallagher family will be there. And then a lot of people that we were in Boy Scouts with, a lot of people we were in high school with, so there'll be, and hopefully a lot of townsfolk will, will come out just to remember that.
And this is Monday morning at?
At 9:00. Well, I talked to Joe today and he was going to call Sarah to put it on the calendar. I don't know if it's got on the calendar yet. Him and I have had a hard time connecting this week. He's been in training. He's been here, he's been there and everywhere.
And where is it going to be?
At Gallagher Field.
At Gallagher Field, okay.
We'll make sure that it gets, uh, something goes tomorrow.
Yeah, so, yeah, hopefully members of the board can go. It'll be a quick ceremony.
And in light of all that's going on.
Yeah.
It's, it's really nice to be on.
Yeah, and Joe's reaching out to the Marines. He doesn't think he can get a color guard there, but he's going to try to get a color guard there because he said usually you have to be months in advance before you can get a color guard to show up, unless it's a funeral or something like that.
Joe was pretty, pretty good.
Pretty resourced, yeah. I think last year, well, during COVID, he got us a flag up there like in a week where he, you know, they were not available, but he was able to get one, so.
He's great. We're very lucky.
On that note.
You said the 23rd.
23rd, Monday morning.
I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.